Before we begin, I'd like to state that the Planning Commission meetings are open to the public in person via Microsoft Team streaming application. All Planning Commission meetings, all Planning Commission meeting information can be found in the Town and Monument website. The Planning Commission's role is to conduct public hearings as to make recommendation for the town council regarding land use matters in the Town and Monument. Each commissioner agrees to a nonpartial objective and fair review, which includes no prejudgment of the projects. Should a commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself for any conflicts of personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight, please say so now. We will now begin the meeting with roll call.
Chair Trujillo. Commissioner Green. Commissioner Ugly.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
And Commissioner Hatch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. At this point, we do have a quorum. So we, with Commissioner Hatch here as the alternate commissioner, we will wait to bring her on as a permanent commissioner. Or next week, we'll get that taken care of. Perfect, thank you. At this time, if we could please stand and for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
All right, Ray, for the commission, if we could get approval for the minutes from the commissioners.
I move to approve the minutes from November 11th, 2024.
A second motion.
Thank you. Chair Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Ugly.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Yes.
And finally, Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Ray. Our first case is for a request for approval for the final planned unit development for Panda Express, legally described as Lot 5A, Monument Marketplace North filing 1A. This case has been noticed, this case has been noticed for a public hearing. Presentation will be by staff, and after that, we will open public comments. I defer to staff.
Good evening, Chair and Plan Commission members. So tonight's case is the chair recognized is for the, a request for a final PUD approval for Panda Express over on Cinematic View. You're very familiar with this since we just had a case on this for Ziggy's Coffee at a recent Plan Commission meeting. Public notice was provided per our current code, which requires notice be placed in front of the town hall, notice be sent out to residents within, within a buffer area around the property, as well as a sign being posted on the property. The affidavits being shown on the screen right now are just confirmed that the applicant has done so. The applicant is seeking approval of a final plan unit development for Lot 5, Monument Marketplace North, for the construction and operation of Panda Express. As proposed, Panda is a corporate-owned fast food restaurant with a drive-through. I'm sure they would describe with, with much more detail what that restaurant is, and you might be familiar with it already. Exhibits that are included in with the staff report include aerial location map and future land use map, public hearing notices, final plan unit development, and the site plan documents, grading erosion control and site control plans, final drainage report, an updated traffic impact study, as well as a draft finding effect that you may choose to use. Just before we go further, I want to just kind of review with you the standards that are the criteria for review of a final plan, planning a development. The first is that the proposed use meets the intent of the comprehensive designation for the property. The final planning development is consistent with the approved preliminary planning unit development. On-site circulation and access are designed for the anticipated type of pedestrian and vehicular traffic generated by the restaurant and drive-through. Building design is in terms of, building design in terms of orientation, spacing, materials, exterior color and texture, storage, lighting, resulted in quality architectural design is compatible with the existing and anticipated area commercial developments. The landscaping is a quality design that enhances the site and is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, as shown by amount types and materials used. Adequate off-street parking, both standard and ADA accessible, are provided. The final plan unit development fits within the context of the planned land use pattern and roadway and utility systems of the larger surrounding area. So with that, the applicant is here, is online, and may have a representative here in the, in the chamber. HC Clover Architects out of Lenexa, Kansas, is the applicant representing Panda Express. The property owner is Creekside Developers, and as we noted before, it's on Cinematic View and the request is for a final PUD. The property is currently, has a preliminary PUD approval under ordinance number 24, 2019. To the north is the future Ziggy's Coffee restaurant with a drive-through. To the south is Freedom Express Car Wash. To the east is some miscellaneous commercial properties and buildings, and to the west is a vacant mixed-use PUD property. The subject property was originally plotted as part of the Monument Marketplace filing 16 on November 19th, 2007. On July 1st, 2019, the town council, or formerly known as the Board of Trustees, adopted ordinance number 24, 2019, granting approval of a zoning change, preliminary planning unit development, and final plan of subdivision for Monument Marketplace North filing 1. Each parcel within the Monument Marketplace filing 1 is required to obtain a final plan unit development approval prior to the issuance of a land development and building permit. The, so up on the, on the screen right now is a, is the site plan for the proposed restaurant. As you'll see, the building is placed at the south portion of the property, the, with the drive-through operating counterclockwise around the property. I've got that highlighted in blue with its parking field to the north. You'll also note that there's a dumpster enclosure at the far northwest corner of the property. It has full vehicular access from Cinematic View, and it has a sidewalk access just along, sidewalk access to Jackson Creek Parkway. You'll see there's an angled little, an angled sidewalk shown here that provides access for anyone who might be walking down Jackson Creek Parkway, or we've been requiring that consistently throughout the, this planning development to make sure that people can get in. Specifically, we know high school students are probably finding their way over here, so we wanted to make sure they could walk in, walk into the site without even walking through the street. To the, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into the sign program. Landscaping plan, it features all the landscaping materials that we, that we find typically in, in this, this area and, and newer, newer properties. The elevations are described or shown here in this, in this image. They're using a, a cemeterious siding and wood for their elevations, and elevation features are on all four sides of the building. There is no backside per the, per our sign regulations. And we're quite, actually quite excited for this little, this little panda bear. This will be our, there's a sculpture to be placed in there, by their entrance on the, on the, on the west side of the building. This is, this will be our first privately owned, uh, public sculpture. So, so we've got a lot of people here in the office that are excited about it. We didn't ask for it. It's something that they called and were surprised to hear that we were supporting it on the staff level. And I, if we want to talk about it, we certainly can, but I would hope that you'd support it as well. So the review criteria, if we can go through those again, so that the subject property is designated for mixed use by the town's comprehensive plan. This designation provides for a mixture of non-residential and residential development, professional offices, professional services, convenience, retail, and restaurants with connections by sidewalks and trails. The proposed development meets the intent of this designation. Based on staff's analysis and input provided by the town's Development Review Team, or DRT partners, the proposed project is consistent with all applicable development standards and adequately addresses all criteria of the Development Code. Stormwater management, the applicant provided a final drainage report, which you have in your report. The report was updated as, as late as November 1st of 2024, per our request. It concluded that the stormwater drainage improvements will provide adequate protection to this site without having an adverse impact on adjoining upstream and downstream properties, and is in compliance of the final drainage report for the overall market, Monument Marketplace filing number one. Traffic report, which was also included in the staff report, was updated as, as late as November 13th. The traffic report concluded that the restaurant with drive-through is expected to not have a negative impact on traffic operations for the surrounding roadway network. It furthermore concluded that the project complies with the previously accepted traffic studies submitted for the Water Market Jackson Creek Apartments in Monument Marketplace North, and staff agrees with this assessment. So this is the draft finding effect, if you might, if you choose to, to use this in your motion, but we, we outlined it following the criteria of, of a PUD review and approval. I won't go through these exactly, but you might choose to use those for yours. With that, we're making, we would like you to consider making a motion to recommend approval of the final plan unit development for the development of Lot 5A of Monument Marketplace North for a restaurant with a drive-through, as supported by the attached finding effects and described by the, the following documents that have been, that are listed actually in your staff report, but I'd be glad to list them out here if you'd like me to.
Great, thank you, sir. At this time, we do have, you said the applicant is online, is that correct?
Xavier, would you like to say anything to the Plan Commission?
Yes, let me know if you're able to hear me.
We can. Can hear you.
Okay, yeah, this is Xavier Gavin on behalf of HC Clover Architects, representing Panda Express. And at this time, if you guys have any questions, or if you would like me to kind of give you a brief overview on some of the building operations, I'm happy to respond to that. We also have our civil team, Mary Claire, on behalf of Wallace Design Collective, and I believe our traffic engineer is present in the building. So happy to answer any questions or go over any kind of operational or site-specific questions you have.
Great, thanks Xavier, appreciate your time. We're going to go ahead and open up for public comment at this time. We're going to see if anybody's in the room that would like to speak, and then from there, we'll go online as well. If you just go ahead and stay online, so you can go ahead and hear the questions if there are any, and you can respond to as necessary. At this point, we do open it up to public comment. If there are anybody in the room that would like to make any comments, please come up to the podium, and then from there, put your name on the actual, raise the paper up front here. Put your name and address on the actual paper, and then from there, ask the questions. We'll go and address those with the applicant or with the commission. Any questions in the room? I see none. Ray, are there any online, sir?
At this time, I don't see anyone in the audience who wants to raise their hand or voice of concern.
All right, we're going to give it a, one of those quick minutes. Great job, Ray. All right, Ray, we're going to keep moving on at this time. We're going to close public comments and public hearing, and we're going to open it up for Commissioner questions and comments. The floor is open. Please, ma'am.
Thank you. Normally, when you have a landscaped parkway, you orient your buildings towards it. And we've discussed this with some other projects. This one has a blank wall and a drive-through facing Jackson Creek Parkway. In addition, it, it has the sidewalk coming off Jackson Creek Parkway and literally crossing right in front of the cars leaving the drive-through. When, I don't understand, and maybe I'm asking for somebody to explain it to me, why the front of the building cannot face the parkway, which is normally a very basic urban design principle. I mean, is it, the only thing I can think of, to be honest, is the restaurant wants people driving to look at it and go, oh, a drive-through.
As we, as we spoke of during the previous meetings, there's, there's nothing in our code or in the preliminary PUD that would allow us to require that type of orientation or design standard, as you're, as you're describing. I think that's something we're certainly going to talk about during the comprehensive plan update as we're moving forward. I probably just turn, turn this over to the applicant, and they can explain why they've positioned the building the way it is, and, and we can have a conversation, you can have a conversation with them or ask any other questions.
Is it, is it just too subjective to ask for that? Is it not enough that our code is saying it must, you know, complement what's around it? I would think complementing a major landscaped parkway is something that actually the code does point to. So am I understanding that the code is not specific enough, therefore that cannot be brought up with the applicant?
No, you certainly can talk, talk about it with the applicant. This, this application's been in the process well before I, before I was here, the development pause. So it, as new projects are coming in in other areas, and as I said, we're going to certainly talk about this at great level during the comp plan update. There, one of the components of the comp plan update is design standards for corridors, and this, this corridor's actually been designated in the, at least in the scope of the comprehensive plan, as one of those areas we're going to look at. So I think we're going to spend a lot of time talking about what we want, how we want buildings oriented and designed. But in this case, this, this, this project was subject to the, the development pause. It waited, and we've been going through and finalizing, finalizing the plan since then. But you're certainly welcome to talk to the applicant and see what their thoughts are.
I had a couple of questions, either for the applicant or for staff, and it relates again to the sidewalk coming off. First question really is, I assume that's going to be ADA compliant coming down off of Jackson Creek Parkway?
That is correct. It will be ADA requirement.
And I don't really see where there's any connectivity in terms of sidewalks between this location and Ziggy's and KFC and other properties that eventually are going to be going into that location. Plans for that, does that come up ultimately? I just kind of want to see what the process is there.
That, certainly a question that we raised earlier on. The other, with Ziggy's and others, there, Kentucky Fried Chicken's the first one that connects to the sidewalk in this matter, a manner. Ziggy's also has the same type of ramp, same kind of sidewalk or ramp to the public sidewalk along the, the parkway. And there is no sidewalk envisioned or ever planned in the preliminary PUD for Cinematic View, so although we might want to insert one there, there's, it would be a sidewalk leaning to nowhere and having no way to get to it. We had talked to previous applicants, not necessarily Panda Express, about providing pedestrian crossings within the property, but we realized what we'd be doing is what having, making people walk through the parking lot to get from, from one property to the other. So it seemed to make sense to, to have them walk out, out to the public sidewalk along Jackson Creek Parkway and get to whichever property they want to go to.
And so each of the, each of those three properties so far, well, two that have already been approved and this one, they'll have, they'll have barriers, if you will, between each one of the property lines, so that you cannot cross from KFC to Ziggy's and Ziggy's into Panda Express, is that correct?
The, the only property that has an interconnect for vehicles is Kentucky Fried Chicken, and that provides, provides for informally a connection to the property to the north at the corner of, I'm forgetting the name of the road, starts with an H. Harness, thank you. Yeah, so at the corner, at the corner of Harness and Jackson Creek, there's another piece of property that'll be coming to you later, and that's the only one that there was, there's an informal connection. And the reason I describe it as informal, there, as far as I can tell, there are no easements, or actually discussion at the Plan Commissioner Council level that I've been able to find that shows that they have to provide an interconnect, but the aisle itself is designed to go right to the property line and connect to the property to the north. I was talking, that was weird. The, none of the other properties seem to have, have that kind of description, and it's not described in the preliminary PUD.
And is that not a condition that we can place on approval for this?
You can, I think we should probably, you might want to have a conversation with the applicant and see, give them specifics so they can, they can respond to you, rather than just telling them to go do it.
And then, there's a statement here, I just wanted to get clarity. It says that access to the subject property is via Cinematic View, a private road owned and maintained by Tribeview Metropolitan District. I thought that I recalled in our last approval for Ziggy's Coffee that it was, that that particular road was maintained by a private entity other than Tribeview. I just wanted to clarify that.
I think you're correct in that statement. The owner of the property is here, and that's what he had, he had reported last time, so I'm, that, that my statement, that Tribeview's taking care of it, is an error.
Kind of already hit on this multiple times, so more of a confirmation. Looks like this site does have sidewalk along Cinematic View, then there's retaining wall going south, so I'm assuming that will not inhibit any future pedestrian connectivity going south, seeing that there's no requirement to put sidewalk along Cinematic View, and then similar for heading west at the entry point of Panda Express. Any reason to provide a crossing at that point for any future sidewalk going west? I'm not sure what's planned, planned there, but is there any reason to provide a crossing across and around Cinematic View going west for connectivity purposes as well?
Just so I understand what you're asking, are you, are you saying a crosswalk across Cinematic View? So heart, there, there is a cross, a crossing at Harness, so that'd probably be the safest place to cross. There is no, because Harness, I'm sorry, because Cinematic View is not a public, public street, the town or, wouldn't be, wouldn't be in the position of providing a sidewalk on, on the east side of Cinematic View in the future. But we could certainly talk with, with the developer as they're coming in with future sites or future projects, if it warrants a sidewalk or other crossings.
This is Donna Hatch. I have a question for the developer or for the person attending today, if they're aware of page 12, is it 10, the site plan. I saw a shape that I'd like clarification on, if you could get to that.
The, the site plan's on the screen, it could.
Well, I don't have it.
Oh, can you see it on your screen now?
You have the landscape.
I just switched them. It, there's a slight delay, but you should see, you'll see the site plan.
The drive-through, and I question, what is, what is that referencing? I can't annotate anything from the arrows pointing what that is trying to tell me. Can someone answer that question?
Xavier, she, she's describing the, the, the drive, there's a note cloud in the area where the drive-through window is. Could you explain what that is?
Yes, let's see, are you looking at the C1 site plan? I'm not able to make out the specific note.
Yeah, it's C1.
And there's a note, so there's a six-foot logo sign, so I think, I believe that's referencing the elevation, or if you look at the elevation, the six-foot lockup sign over the drive-through window, if I'm understanding the question correctly.
I'm actually referencing the outline that pops up, that goes from the upper corner of the, of the property or the building, out to Jackson Creek Parkway, and then back to the building. It looks like a cloud.
I see. Yes, so that is revision cloud reference from a prior version of the site plan that did not have the pedestrian access in that location, but further north, and that's kind of more for our reference and for the town's reference as we go throughout the review process to just kind of highlight where that change was made.
Real quick question, as we're looking at Panda Express off to the south, in this deprecation, obviously up is north, south is to the bottom half of the paper, Freedom Express Car Wash located to the south there, recently had some problems with water irrigation from the car wash going to that runoff and retainment area to the west. Is there going to be any hindrance associated with water retention inside those areas, and will that water retention be able to permeate, move down the road, move down into the other locations? Is that going to be a hindrance with water rotation, water retention in that area due to the fact that, you know, it's providing more runoff eventually through that area?
I wouldn't be able to speak to the, the car wash question, but the, that's why we rely so heavily on the updated stormwater management report. And they, I also want to mention, because Panda's gone out of their way to work with, to help convey, convey their stormwater as well through an easement, so each of these properties are working in fact together like a planning development should to, to manage stormwater and so on, so, but yeah, but.
Rolling with, trying to make sure that they mitigated that with as much possibility to the community, seems like Panda Express is doing the same, so, you know, just wanted to make sure the comment was out there. At this time, I have no other comments. Thank you. With that being said, commissioners, we are now moving to motion to vote, any, and you have the approvals, approval with condition denial and continuance on there for your relay there. If you would, someone give us a motion for the next action with this, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Smith, I'm happy to make a motion to recommend approval. The applicant's request to approve the final planned unit development for Panda Express legally, legally described as Lot 5A, Monument Marketplace, North filing number 1A, and located at 16481 Cinematic View, based upon the findings of fact attached here too, as Exhibit 4 in the staff report.
Colin, second.
Thank you. Chair Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Ugly.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
And Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Our second case is the approval, is a request for approval for a final planned unit development and final plat for Falcon Commerce Center filing number four. This case has been noticed for a public hearing. With that, I defer to staff for presentation.
You're too fast.
Sorry.
Just call it the way I see it. Sorry. Thank you again, Chair and Commission members. This is going to be a little bit different presentation. I'm going to be tag teaming with the developer on this presentation tonight. So I'm going to kind of start it off and then I'm going to pass it over to Andrea Barlow to kind of take over from there and then will return back to me for the conclusion of the presentation. So where the applicant, first of all, this is a public hearing and as I've shown in previous, there's an affidavit that notices provided to the homeowners and property owners around the, around the property per the municipal code, as well as there's been a sign placed on the property to notify everyone that this, this hearing is occurring. The applicant is seeking a approval of a fine, final planned unit development and final plat for Falcon Commerce Center filing number four. Included with staff's report are the various maps such as the aerial location map and future land use map, public hearing notice, final plan, unit development plan, final plat, building renderings, final drainage report, the updated traffic generation analysis for Squadron and Tarazo Industrial, geological hazard evaluation and environmental assessment reports, as well as the developer and property owners project narrative. We, the criteria similar to the last case is that based on code, the proposed use needs to meet the intent of the comprehensive plan designation for the property. The final planned unit development is consistent with the approved preliminary plan unit development. On-site circulation and access need to be designed for the anticipated type of pedestrian and vehicular traffic generated by the, and this would not be a restaurant and drive-through, but by the proposed uses for the building. Building design is in terms of orientation, spacing, materials, and so on, are compatible with the existing and anticipated area commercial developments. Landscaping is a quality design that enhances the site and is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood as shown by amounts types and material uses. There's adequate off-street parking, both standard and ADA accessible. And the final PUD development fits within the context of the planned land use pattern and roadway and utility systems of the larger surrounding area. The applicant is here tonight, Andy Crimmens of Kansas City. The property owner is here as well, Tom Blunk, representing Forest Lakes LLC out of Evanston, Illinois. The property itself is located at the southeast corner of Tarazo, I'm sorry, southwest corner of Tarazo Drive and Squadron Drive. The request again is for final plan unit development, final plat approval for Falcon Commerce Center filing four. The surrounding zoning, this, this property is zoned light industrial with a prelimi, or with a preliminary PUD for Falcon Commerce Center under ordinance number 242020. And I apologize, it's not zoned light industrial. It has a PUD. The property is, to the north is Quick Trip, which is a PUD. To the south is Eagle Rock Distributing, which is also a PUD. To the east is UPS Distribution Center PUD. And to the west is vacant to be named later. This is where I pause and switch it so that Andrea Barlow might be able to get up and continue this presentation. Or Tom Blunk.
Team, and so that everybody can hear me. Okay. I'm going to introduce our team. I'm Tom Blunk. I recognize a few of you from the last time I was up here. It's been a little while with the moratorium that was in the town, but happy to be back. I represent, as Dan said, the owner of the land. They've owned it for about 30 years. And tonight I want to introduce, you mentioned Andy Crimmens' name. Andy's with Van Trust. He is a senior VP with them. And Mike Urrig also here with us tonight. He's a senior director of development services. So Van Trust is based in Kansas City. As Dan had mentioned, they have seven offices throughout the United States. They're a national developer in office, multifamily and industrial markets with about 58 million square feet of industrial developments through 2023, excuse me, through 2023. And in 2023, they were the NAIOPE Developer of the Year in the country. So that's the National Association of Industrial and Office Properties. So it's a quite a great accolade for them. They've got a great resume, which is one of the reasons that our firm, the landowner, has partnered with them. We have a lot of Kansas City ties. We know the executives of Van Trust. So we've got a longstanding relationship, which is why we are joint forces. So our entity, Forest Lakes LSC, provides the land for the deal that we're going to present to you tonight. And Van Trust brings the expertise on the industrial development side. Also on our team tonight, Andrea Barlow of NES is here. She's our land planner. So I know all of you are pretty much familiar with Andrea. So she will, she will give the bulk of the presentation tonight. And as well, Matt Erickson of KIWA Engineering, who's the civil engineer. The town had asked, because some time has passed on a lot of this stuff, to have a civil engineer available and present a summary of our stormwater, because there have been some concerns and questions about stormwater. So we, we prepared that. It's a very detailed element of the presentation. Matt is here tonight to give you a kind of an overview. And if there's any detailed questions, he'll, he'll dig into that. So before I turn it over to Andrea, who's going to give the really the history of the preliminary PUD, I did want to note that the function of the PD is to establish standards for the commercial park as a whole. So that finally, so that when the final PUD is brought forward like tonight for individual, it's simply compliance based. It's, we set the rules of the game. Do we comply with those or not? It's, it's a fairly easy process to go through. A number of you planning commissioners were involved with that preliminary PUD. Some of you are newer faces. And that's a good segue because we were, we were given the town staff's report. And one of the critical elements of the design and one of the standards of the preliminary PUD was truck trailer parking. And so that's a critical element for the buildings that were, that we are going to develop under that PUD. Town staff has put a stipulation in their report recommending approval of the project for all the things, but they've recommended not to approve the trailer parking. We sort of strongly disagree with that. We think the PUD is very clear as to why that's allowed. Again, it was part of that preliminary PUD that's gone through the process and approved two years ago. So Andrea will speak to a little bit more of the specifics, but I just wanted to, as the landowner, wanted to reiterate the importance of that for us. So we will be asking you tonight to consider all the facts and to hopefully approve the project, but also approve it without the stipulation that the town has suggested. You know, the, the truck trailer parking, when you have a building, we got two buildings you'll see tonight as they present, the larger of the two buildings is just under 250,000 square feet. So the typical tenant that we're going to try to attract that, that size of a building typically wants outdoor truck trailer storage. And so without providing that, it's, it's a critical element. You simply can't do it. The analogy I like to give is it's like, it's building, it's like building a house today without a garage. You wouldn't do it because you limit your field of buyers so dramatically. I'm not saying somebody wouldn't buy a house without a garage, but generally speaking, they wouldn't. So it's a critical factor. It's why I wanted to step up here tonight, introduce our team and introduce how important that was. And we're hopeful that at the end of the evening, if we've answered every questions, we'll get that support from you without that stipulation. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrea Barlow, who will do the bulk of the presentation.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. Andrea Barlow with NES, in front of you many times, most of you, not, not all of you. I see some new faces. Do I have control of the slides or do I have to ask you to just go, go like that? Okay. Okay. Next slide, please. Tom has already introduced a team. So I don't need to go over that again. Next slide. So I really want to start going back with some history. I think you're all familiar where the site is located, just on the south side of Baptist Road. There is an existing pilot development there and Quick Trip now UPS is in place, Eagle Rock. So it's an area which is developing. Next slide. And this shows in a little bit more detail, the filing for area, the area in yellow was the filing, sorry, Phase 2 preliminary plan, which I'm going to be talking about a little bit more. The areas that are blank are in the northwest side there with the fire, Phase 1 area, filing 1. And then the Eagle Rock is the area that's blank just to the south of the filing for area. Next slide. So just going through some of the history, as you know, we've been through many phases with this development. We started back, well, back in the eighties when this was originally annexed into the town of Monument. It was zoned PID and had a very detailed list of uses that were allowed in that PID. In 2020, we came forward with a rezoning of this area to a PD at that time, which is a planned development to kind of reiterate those uses because the town at that time were encouraging everybody with a PID to rezone to a PD, which is just moving from a planned industrial zone to a planned development zone because they changed their zoning classification. So we got, we came forward with a rezone in 2020 and a sketch plan which supported that rezone. And then October 2020, we received approval of the Phase 1 preliminary plan, which I mentioned is that northwestern portion where the UPS and the Quick Trip now are located. And then the filing one plat, which was for those lots and for the, for the continuation of Tarazo, because at that point Tarazo was just providing access to pilot, continuation of Tarazo to Squadron and the completion of Squadron. UPS final PD site plan was approved in January 2021, Quick Trip in 2022, and then the Eagle Rock was approved with their final PD site plan in June 2022 as well. Phase 2 preliminary plan, we then came forward with that, which I'm going to talk a little bit more about because that's the forms, the basis of the area we're now considering. That was approved in July 2022. And that was for the remainder of the sketch plan area. And then October 22, we got approval of the final plat for filing two, which was the extension of Tarazo all the way to Jackson Creek. And then fairly recently, I think most of you may remember this, we came forward with the filing three plat, which was for the extension of Tarazo over Jackson Creek to access the southern portion of the property. So it's been an ongoing process, many years, and we've been kind of going through it stage by stage to set the scene. So next slide, oh, you have that. Thank you. The PD zoning and sketch plan, which was approved that, so this shows it's a total of 214 acres. It excluded the pilot because that had already been approved under the previous zoning. Went on off, off and on there without me touching it, but it's back on now. Sorry. Thank you. Mix of uses, including industrial, institutional, civic, commercial, medical office. So just a broad range of uses that were allowed in that area. And the area D, this is oriented, obviously not north to south, but the D area, which is on the south adjacent to the Air Force Academy, was identified for residential with the rest of it being a mix of non-residential uses. So as I noted, next slide, we came forward with the Phase 2 preliminary plan, having done Phase 1, to kind of cover the rest of the PUD. And in doing that, we went through a fairly extensive process with input from the Save Monument Group about how this would evolve moving forward. So we made a few changes as we went through that Phase 2 preliminary plan, including a reduction of floor space by 17%. We completely removed industrial uses from area B adjacent to I-25 and focused them only in areas C and D potentially. D still has a potential to be either residential or non-residential. That has always been part of that calculation and plan for that area. We introduced a maximum building size because there were concerns about having these mega distribution centers. So we introduced a maximum building size of 250,000 square feet. And only one building in the remainder of Falcon Commerce Center could be a cross dock facility. Height was reduced. Originally, the sketch plan identified a height of 100, 100 feet. And we reduced that to 70 feet for the remainder of the Phase 2 area. And then we also added very specific industrial standards. This was because at that time, there was a lot of discussion in the town about revising the industrial standards in the code, and that was subsequently done. But we, we were, through the discussions of the Save Monument Group, we, we kind of honed in on our own industrial standards, which were very similar to those that were coming forward in the code in any event. And also one thing we did add again, as was suggested by the Save Monument Group, was a small area of open space amenity area to serve the park. And that was, the final PUD plan for that was approved earlier this year also, I think it was back in March. So, and that is, construction of that is completed. So that is kind of a summary of where we were and how we've got to where we are today. And these were some of the industrial standards that were incorporated. So it included buffers, controls on enclosures, outdoor storage, building design, where I noted the cross dock facility, and also provision for truck and trailer parking. It was, is to be permitted in the designated areas on final PUD plans. There's a little bit more to the verbiage in that, which I'll come to later. And then obviously external effects, there was quite an extensive paragraph on that, but the bottom line is that we have to meet all local, state, federal requirements in those regards. Next slide. So as I noted earlier, we've been working on this since 2020. And as a result of that, there's been a significant investment in the infrastructure for this park based upon the approvals that have been allowed to date. And on the assumption that those land uses that have been approved can be implemented and all the aspects of the industrial standards can be implemented. So the initial infrastructure was approximately $10 million on water and sewer, which is put in place by Forest Lakes Metropolitan District. And then for filing one, significant infrastructure was implemented there, as I noted, with the extension of Tarazo Squadron, and also mass grading and the construction of the full spectrum detention pond, which lies just to the south of Eagle Rock. So that detention pond is there to serve the entirety of this development north of Jackson Creek. So that's a nine-acre detention facility to take stormwater runoff. And that has been designed to accommodate everything north of Jackson Creek. And so that was a fairly significant investment in filing one. And then also, this developer, as well as other developers on the north side of Baptist Road, have been required to contribute to the, what at that time was a future traffic signal. Now it's turned into a roundabout, which is under construction. So that money is going towards the roundabout. Filing two, additional extension of Tarazo, that's an additional $4 million worth of investment. And then filing three, which is currently being implemented through, there's a whole permitting phase to go through with that, but that's going to be another three to four million. So I see a significant amount of investment by the developer in bringing this industrial commercial park forward. So next slide, please. So talking a little bit more about the site plan that we have here. So we have two lots and two buildings. Building A is on Lot 1, Building B is on Lot 2. They are proposed industrial warehouse distribution for. They are proposed industrial warehouse distribution facilities. They are speculative, so there's no particular user anticipated at this point. And that's kind of touching on the point that Tom was making earlier is that we've identified on, in this area behind Building A on Lot One, a potential area for truck and trailer parking if that user requires it. So we are anticipating that it's likely, but we don't know for sure. And it may be all that space, it may be not, not all of that space, but there, there is that identified area with that potential. The information about the sizes of the building is here. As we noted, there is a restriction on two hundred and fifty thousand square feet as the maximum size. So we're just coming in under that. In fact, that's probably going to shrink a little bit as we refine the building design, but we're coming in just under that two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. And Building A is proposed, as you can see by the design, as a cross dock facility with docks on both sides of that building. And that is the only building that can be a cross dock facility. But once this is a cross dock facility, no other industrial buildings on the property can be. Building B is reloaded, so from the front along Taratso, that is just going to appear like a warehousing with, with the loading behind, and it's going to kind of match up. You can just see on this plan, the back of the UPS, so there can be loading dock to loading dock, relationship between those. And and then we're going to plant, like I say, to platter it into two lots, which we are asking for approval of final plat here tonight as well. That will allow the buildings to be phased. It will be a phased development. And I just wanted to point out, because I'm going to talk a little bit about it on, on the elevations, is these, on Building A, the little bump outs that you see, these were added to provide a little bit of variation in the elevation treatment. So it's not quite as obvious on the elevation plan. So I, I just wanted to point, point that out on the site plan. And then next slide, same plan, but a little bit more information on access and other technical matters. So we have three points of access of Taratso Drive proposed. One of them is a shared access between the two lots. That will be a shared access easement, but each lot has its own separate access as well. And then Lot Two has an access coming in off Squadron Drive to the north. All stormwater runoff will, as I noted, go to the full spectrum pond just to the south. There is, we talked about the trailer parking, so I just wanted to talk a little bit more about the wording in, on the preliminary P U D, which sets the scene for why we believe that this is an allowed aspect of this development. So Section Six of the preliminary plan deals with the industrial use standards. And it says that these standards modify and supersede the industrial use standards in Chapter eighteen oh four one sixty. Right glasses. Of the Monument Municipal Code as amended and shall govern the planned unit development. So it's quite clear that the industrial standards that we set out in the preliminary plan were, preliminary P U D plan were intended to govern the P U D. And it says that truck trailer parking, and then it says it's only permitted in designate areas to be further detailed on the final P U D plan, and that's what we're doing here. And it says any future code restrictions on truck trailer parking will not apply to this P U D. So we set this up so the P U D would, would control what we can do here as opposed to any changes to the code that might seek to place additional restrictions on truck or trailer parking. So in that area, there's a potential between thirty five to fifty spaces. We, we could potentially get a maximum fifty, we'll see that being the range of likely trailer parking. To put that in context, so the UPS has eighteen parking spaces, but the Eagle Rock has a hundred and one currently, with the potential for an additional sixteen in the future. So what we're proposing is kind of consistent with what's been allowed with the two adjacent developments and is somewhere in the middle of the two. And it's, it's not as many as UPS has, but also not nearly as many as are being proposed at the Eagle Rock or currently available and future proposals. And also, we were looking to screen it from Taratso by putting it behind the building so that it would not be visible from the public right of way. Next slide. So just a few comparisons here between what's approved under the preliminary P U D plan and what we're proposing. So a range of uses were allowed. We narrowed it down to the industrial warehouse distribution facility we're proposing. The maximum height of the buildings were allowed to be seventy feet. We're actually, our P U D says forty six feet, but we did some refinements through the process, and we think we're going to be nearer to forty one feet with our maximum height of the building, so significantly lower than the allowed seventy feet. We had some setback requirements from Santa Fe Trail and Taratso, when we're located much further away from both of those. And then internally, there was no requirement specifically, but we have seventy eight feet approximately between the buildings. Lot coverage was a forty percent requirement, a maximum lot coverage. We're at thirty seven percent maximum, and I put it to thirty seven because lot than the other. So. And the maximum industrial floor space. We had an overall requirement, a maximum for the entirety of the development of just over a million square feet. And of that, there's five hundred and seventy square feet remaining. That's not already been committed. And we're proposing three hundred and sixty four thousand one hundred and sixty. So we're well within the overall maximum square footage allowed. As previously noted, the maximum building size is two hundred and fifty square feet. We're just under that. We're building A. Only allowed one cross dock. We're only proposing one cross dock, and that's it for the rest of the park. And parking is per town's requirements, and we've met those in, insofar as we, we can anticipate for a speculative building. And then truck and trailer parking, preliminary pad said to be determined with the final P U D plan, and that's what we're doing at the rear of Building A. Showing some of the elevations. The intent of this park for Falcon Commerce Center, I, I, just as a reminder, they do have detailed design guidelines, which all the buildings in the park have to adhere to. It's called the Falcon Commerce Center in acknowledgement of the Air Force Academy adjacent, and the intent has always been to adopt their color scheme, which is blue with some white accents and gray. And that's really what we're proposing here. So the predominant color of the buildings is a gray tone. There are some blue accents and some white accents to tie into that overall theme for the park. And like I say, this is Building A, and you can just about see at the ends how those end areas are kind of creating a little bit more variation in the architectural elevation. And we've proposed different kind of bands of color to try and break up the building. Massing. And similarly, if you go to next slide, Building B, it's a little smaller building, but that also has some variation primarily in the center area where the main entrances will be. And just carrying on that similar elevation treatment. And then the next slide, next couple of slides are actually going to show you some renderings that have been produced to just show that a little clearer. This is a rendering of Building A, and you can kind of see in the background there how that, those corners kind of jump out. Again, not so obvious on this corner, but it, it just provides some variation in that elevation and the, the kind of muted color tones in that, that gray family with the blue accents and some white accents. And then the next slide is similar rendering for Building B. And then I am going to actually now ask Matt Erickson from Cairo Engineering to come up. He's got a few slides to talk about the stormwater. So that has come up as a question before, so particularly in relation to ship to comments from the Air Force Academy. So Matt's going to talk about the conversations we've had with them.
And I'm with Cairo Engineering. I'm the civil engineer on this project, but also for the previous public improvement projects where, that Andrea just went through. I know Andrea and Tom have kind of, feel like stole my thunder a little bit with the drainage, so I'm not, I'm not going to go into too much detail. But I'm available if you guys have questions and if you want me to get into more detail. The slides that if you have questions, just let me know. Happy to answer any questions. The main point why I'm here is just to provide a little history and background on the stormwater improvements for the overall Falcon Commerce Center development. The, the plan in front of you, the shaded area that's blue, that's red, and it all drains to the, the full spectrum detention basin or the regional detention basin that we have that provides stormwater detention and stormwater quality improvements for the overall Falcon Commerce Center development that's to the north of Jackson Creek. Back in October two thousand and twenty, the town approved the Master Development Drainage Plan, or M D D P, and the preliminary site plan for Falcon Commerce Center. The M D D P is a drainage study describing the proposed stormwater drainage parents and impacts associated with overall development. The M D D P includes assumptions about the plan development. This is done so the overall drainage facilities can be designed and constructed either before or as part of the, the development. So what, when that was approved and shortly after, the filing number one improvements were approved by the city. And they were constructed, so that include the, the full spectrum detention basin, the regional detention basin that the north half or north portion of the development drains to. Next slide, please. So the full spectrum detention basin reduces the stormwater flow rates to pre-development levels for all the storm events up to the hundred year event. Follows the Mile High Flood District design procedures as required by the town and the county. The filing for development will result in a lower percent impervious than assumed in M D D P. So when we, when we did the M D D P, we have to make assumption as how each area is going to be developed. We assumed eighty five percent impervious for the, for this area of the Falcon Commerce Center development. And it's actually going to be at seventy seven percent. What that means is there's a little bit less pavement and/or, and/or buildings. And this will result in a reduction in the peak flows leaving the site and volume required for stormwater detention in comparison with the M D D P. I should note that the, we've been talking a little bit about the future truck trailer parking. That's included in the seventy seven percent that, that I just mentioned. So this means that the full spectrum detention basin has sufficient capacity to accept and treat the stormwater from filing four and the other developments that are to the north of Jackson Creek. So this slide shows some pictures of Jackson Creek at the location where the detention basin outlet pipe goes into the creek. And it also shows another picture that's just downstream at the property line. Hopefully, you can see the creek is in good condition. And we've talked a little bit, you know, through discussions with Air Force Academy, the downstream section of this creek beyond the railroad tracks is in a little bit of disrepair, but in, in this section, it's in, it's in good condition. And it has been, the, the pipe outfall has been in place for, for three years. As part of the filing three project that's currently under construction, there's going to be a wall that, a buried wall that will be constructed at the property line along the creek. So that, that wall will be placed so the, the flow line of the creek stays where it's at moving forward and minimizes the chance of any erosion coming upstream from, say, the Santa Fe Trail or further downstream. The wall is added as a precautionary measure. It is not required by the town, but was added because of discussions with Air Force Academy. So the developer understands Air Force Academy's concerns with the condition of the existing creek downstream of the railroad bridge and is interested in helping to determine a regional solution to address their concerns. Had several meetings over the history of the development, included, including in person, on the site, virtual meetings to discuss the creek and respond to their concerns. Their concerns are mainly regional concerns associated with Jackson Creek and relate to the full watershed. The Falcon Commerce Center development is at the downstream end of Jackson Creek, right before it drains into Monument Creek. The full Jackson Creek watershed is two thousand seven hundred and eighty acres. The Falcon Commerce Center development is roughly a hundred and seventy five acres. So there's a, it's just a small percentage of that total watershed area. And this final slide, from me anyways, includes a little background on full spectrum detention design. Is developed by Mile High Flood District. They're in Colorado. They're the expert from a drainage standpoint, and most of the communities follow their requirements. Has, has the following text in it. And it was, it indicates that full spectrum detention as, as we've put into specifically created to address erosion in creeks downstream of developments. So I, I won't read through the, all the text here, but just wanted to give it to you for reference. So that's, that's it from me, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
So we're on the next slide. So this is really just a quick kind of review of where we are with the criteria and how we meet them, or how we feel we meet them at least. Consistently with the preliminary P U D plan, we, we did that comparison chart. We believe we're consistent in every aspect with the preliminary P U D plan, including the optional trailer parking identified. We've got adequate access and circulation through the site with our four points of access. I didn't really touch on it, but based on conversation on the last item, I just want to highlight that there is a sidewalk on Taratso Drive, which provides which is the spine road through the development and all the developments touch that. So that provides the main circulation for pedestrians and the park that's immediately to south of this has a trail access to the Santa Fe Trail. Again, for functional parks, I just mentioned the small park to the south, but there's also twenty acres of open space adjacent to Jackson Creek that's been retained as part of the overall development. The variety of development and housing types, obviously, housing isn't part of this particular filing, but the overall Falcon Commerce Center does provide a variety of different types of industrial, commercial and potential for residential. Privacy really isn't relevant on a, an industrial development. Building design, we feel we've provided a quality building architecture. We did make some changes at staff suggestion between our first and second submit all. And I think that was in response to concerns that had been expressed on other architectural design to provide a little bit more muted tones, more in the gray family than the white. And so we responded to that. And quality landscaping, we are the landscape architectures, architects on the project. So I feel we do quality landscape design and something that's consistent with the town's requirements in terms of landscaping and also with the plant materials. As I noted before, parking meets the town's standards and it fits in with the surrounding land use pattern of the park that's already been approved. And with that, next slide, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have, our whole team, so.
Dan, did you have any further portion to proceed with this brief from this staff?
Okay. Um, I think the only thing I get, I would like to respond to is the, the, the truck storage area that is placed in there, that it was placed in staff's recommendation out of concern for misuse of those type of parking spaces at the locations they've talked about and others in the area. So we wanted to make sure that was a conversation we had here as we're sending a recommendation up to council. I, I really appreciated their justification and explanation of that, and I really don't have a counter for it. Other than the preliminary, the preliminary P U D did allow for final conversation about that detail at a later other than the preliminary, the preliminary PUD did allow for final conversation about that detail at a later date. And this is that later date. So I just wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to talk about it as you're, as you're considering make a, making a recommendation to approve both the final PUD as well as the final plat for this project.
Great, thank you, sir. At this point, we're going to go ahead and open up public hearing, public comments. Anybody here comments? No, Ray, online if you would, sir.
At this time, I'm not seeing anyone online that would like to raise their hand or leave a comment.
Do so. This time, we're going to close public comment. We're going to open it up for Commissioner questions and comments. I defer to Mrs. Green, please, ma'am.
Thank you. Will there be a landscape buffer? I, I know there will be landscaping. I'm talking a buffer, like between the buildings in the Santa Fe Trail or.
There is a landscape setback there between the, between the two, yes. There will be some landscaping, but there, because of the slope there, there isn't the ability to put any trees.
Thank you.
I'll keep my finger on it. Encourage areas to develop from existing industrial character to more organized small business and contractor trades area. Allow small existing business areas in town to remain and expand to meet the needs of the area population. Smaller business office research and development space that require the distribution of goods by cargo vans and smaller I trucks. Small office or incubator space that does not require high visibility from well-traveled streets that may have a retail component as an accessory use. Development that is clustered in small scale to preserve view corridors from I-25 to the mountains. Landscape buffer or other screening to ensure no visible outdoor storage. Circulation is handled internally on the site and can accommodate cargo vans and smaller trucks. I'm just not seeing anything in here that actually addresses such large buildings, much less large trucks. And at 40-plus feet.
This is not going to be as tall as the adjacent Eagle Rock building, but no, no view corridor analysis was undertaken or required. I do want to respond to your question about the comprehensive plan. I would say a couple of things. First of all, when this came forward in 2020 with the PD sketch plan, the comprehensive plan was approved. It was, that was done in 2017. So all these approvals that have taken place since 2020 have been done in the context of the comprehensive plan and have required a finding of compliance with the comprehensive plan. Yes, the comprehensive plan was approved in 2017. All the approvals on this site, which started in 2020 with the sketch plan and the zoning, and then in 2022 with the preliminary plan, have all been approved in the context of that 2017 comprehensive plan and have been found to be compliant with all the parameters that I indicated, such as a maximum building size of 250,000 square foot, warehouse and distribution as an allowed use. And the basis for that back in 2020 was that we already had a zoning of PID, which was for much more intensive industrial uses and without any of the parameters that we actually have put in place with the preliminary PUD. So what we have now is a much more defined and controlled zoning and preliminary PUD plan than than the previous zoning that was in place on the property. So it has been an evolution. So the, what we have today has been found to be compliant with the comprehensive plan of 2017.
Commissioner Agley, can you share your microphone with Commissioner Green? Hers isn't working. Thank you. It's not you, it's actually the microphone.
I, I don't, you know, see where it meets the criteria of the comprehensive plan at all. It's large, it's a, it's one use. It doesn't, and, and you're requiring truck trailers. I, you know, I don't see this, what the emphasis on breaking this down into smaller buildings with smaller trucks. And I'm not seeing it. And I know there's emphasis all through the comprehensive plan on protecting view corridors. And it would have been nice, you know, I'm sorry you weren't asked to do it, but it would have been nice to have a view corridor study to see if that is happening. In it.
Commissioner.
As Commissioner Agley, I would echo what Commissioner Green had to say on the comprehensive plan, so I won't belabor that point. But I did have a couple of questions, Andrea, for the requested truck parking and trailers. Can you describe type and size of the trailers and trucks that will be parked back there?
That's, I'm not an expert in that.
Sure, the area, it depends on how wide you allow this stall. 12 feet on center for the truck trailer stall is a typical width, could be 13 feet. But we figure that we can fit 35 to 50 in that area that's been defined. The length is 53 feet.
Thank you. Had a question on stormwater impact. I know you've talked about the impact now with this particular development, if it were to be approved. What about the impact upon full buildout of the Falcon Commerce Center with all of the other lots that are involved there?
So the design, the full spectrum detention design, so it's been designed for the whole area to the north to be developed. And to be, you know, like I, I pointed out with the percent impervious, we, we assumed a little bit higher percent impervious as part of the MDDP, but we're coming in below that. But yes, it has been designed so it can accommodate the runoff from a fully developed site, treat those flows, and then discharge them at more of a pre-development level into the creek is, is what we've done.
Thank you. And also on that, for town staff, do we have, do we receive any comments back from the Air Force Academy regarding this particular proposal?
We received the typical comments that we received, we get from the Air Force Academy in protecting their airspace as well as making sure that we meet stormwater criteria, which their applicant's report confirms that they do.
And then really, the last question I had was the criteria that the town staff used in order to try or not try, but recommend that we not allow truck parking for this particular proposal. And, and secondly, how do we enforce that? Obviously, we never intended for trucks to be parked overnight at QT, for example, but they are. So how do we enforce that if we have that stipulation?
That, that, that's a great, great question, and we're, we're actually trying to figure that out in cases. The best, best case scenario is we work with the property owner to make sure that those, their properties are taken care of and maintained that they're not being used as a truck stop or an overnight, an overnight location. There's nothing to indicate that this property owner would do such, who would actually cause this problem. But because it's a concern that's been raised at multiple meetings, I wanted to make sure that we had the conversation tonight. And then you have the ability certainly to ask the developer how they might prevent the, these spaces from being abused and that this area be properly screened.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we were advised about a month ago from Dan that there's a concern that there are trucks parking overnight at the QuickTrip. So when QuickTrip was approved, that was, QuickTrip presented their own material, materials. We were just the land seller. They did agree to a stipulation that they would not have overnight trucking. It's not a truck stop. They don't have truck stop services like the pilot does. And, and the town commissioners, council members, et cetera, were concerned about that. So the, so pilot, or sorry, QuickTrip had agreed not to allow that to happen. They would post signs, but it sounds like that's not happening. There's certain concerns about that. So I did bring it up to the QuickTrip executive recently. He was unaware of that. I don't know if it's been, you know, dealt with at the local level or not, but they are aware of it. I wanted them to make sure they were aware of it so that somebody's not abusing that right. The truck trailer parking we're talking about is not for anybody who's, needs to take a rest in their truck for Department of Transportation. Since there needs to sleep there overnight like a pilot. This is purely to park usually trailers without a truck cab on them there until that trailer needs to offload or unload the next day behind the property. So would not relate to what you're doing or what the concern is.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Corey.
Is this property plan to have any fencing around it or gated? Is it all open?
It's not currently.
But a user could come in and say that they need a gated area. They also might want gates to prevent access in and out of the facility. So we have designed on the electrical side, for example, to have potential for gates if we need to. We certainly wouldn't want illegal parking occurring on the site anywhere, whether it's in the designated truck area or whatever. But right now, there's no, no expectation we'll have to do that. But if we, if we needed to, we could put in gates.
Sounds good, thanks. Is there any type of, I know that, it looks like we got easements as well on that southern, southwestern side. Is there any type of other buffer that's planned along the Santa Fe Trail side? Is it just, you know, open or is there anything else planned on that, on that backside?
Building, there's a fairly big setback from a land. There is a grade there, so if we were to, if we did have a user that wanted to do the truck trailer parking, there'd be a retaining wall there, much like you see at UPS. And then would it be green space to the Santa Fe Trail from there?
Commissioner Smith, thank you for the presentation. My question's about land dedication. So when this PUD was passed, it was a Resolution 562022. The wording in there was all final plats shall comply with Section 1802, 330, Land Dedication Monument Municipal Code 2021 by either the dedication of parkland or by the payment of fees in lieu of parkland dedication. So I did, I went back and looked at the last, the distribution center. So we have, I know, a total of 1.96, I think, acres dedicated right now. My math, and it may be wrong. My math says we should have around 2.4 with this, if you include this 23 acres. And it does say with, with all final plats, this is a final plat.
Two, I think, two things are happening.
Two things occurring here. So there was, when we dealt with the town monument and say monument, one of the requests that they'd made is we, you know, negotiated, hopefully a situation that probably worked for everybody, was to put a park in there and that park would predominantly serve employees in the park. They want to go out and have a lunch break, be able to sit down in a nice area under a sunshade sail and also have connectivity to Santa Fe Trail. So if somebody wanted to go off the trail and sit down and take a rest. So that was a requirement for the preliminary PUD, the park as a whole. In addition to, there's roughly 30 acres of open space we have along the creek. Separate and distinct from that is with each final PUD that comes for you with a plat, they, a developer can either dedicate parkland or they can pay a park fee. And that park fee is pretty substantial. So I think it's like $90,000 on this development. And so in this case, we'll make a, a park fee payment.
Is that, is that, I didn't see that as part of the presentation. So that's, so I'm kind of raising the question.
That they, that. Blunk on that one and, and, yeah, he would cover it. Right.
We, we would do the same. Yeah, the rationale to Commissioner is that nobody necessarily wants a soccer field or whatever, a playground in the middle of a commercial industrial park. So we, we provided something for the employees and people off Santa Fe Trail that we thought two acres is pretty sizable, plus the open space. And then we agreed to pay the fees. Yep. And that's meaningful, I think, to the park district, so.
It's, it's neat. I think the, the park space is actually very nice, I think, for that area. Provides, you know, access for people who are at the truck stops to be able to walk down and hit the trails and stuff too, so.
Can I just add one thing? I'd just like to say that in requiring park fees for non-residential development, no other surrounding jurisdiction requires that. So you're getting extra cash for this type of development that wouldn't normally be applied in other jurisdictions. So it's quite unusual.
I think the argument could be made that we lose money for a lot of different things too. So I think it, I think it kind of balances out.
Commissioner Collins, Ray, I lost my, my sight up here, how I can look, I can looking at us right now. I lost my map. Hey, what, first thing I want to, I like your layout and I think the building looks fabulous, both of them. So nice job on that. My question is going back to those loading doors. How many loading doors are you actually presenting tonight?
So I want to say it's, well, I want to get you the right number here. I have that answer, one second. Andy or Mike, do you have that? It varies by building, obviously, so I want to say in round numbers. I think it's, oh boy, my memory fails me. Does, so the smaller building to the north, building B, 24 dock positions. And so the one distinction I would make there is we may not equip all those dock positions because we could have four tenants in that building, four smaller tenants, and they may not need that level of docks. So you have what are called knockout panels. So you can put them in, but you can build up to 24 docks is the answer to the ultimate question. But you may only see 12. And the larger building, 54, and that's split equivalent on each side, so 26 per side for those dock positions.
So that's 78, and your number you throw out there was 35 to 50? Or is the 35 to 50 just the overflow?
It's, it's really just for the, so building A is the larger building. That's where you get the larger tenants who need the trailer parking so they can stage stuff overnight and deal with it in and out the next day. So building B, the smaller building, doesn't, doesn't, those sorts of size of tenants don't need the truck trailer parking. So we don't have anything planned for that. It's only for building A. So at 50 stalls, that's two per 10,000 square feet. That's a very typical sort of ratio that you would see. Eagle Rock is a similar sized building, they're a little bit bigger at 270,000 square feet. And they have 101 existing plus another 16 expanded.
You're saying you're going to max out at 50?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we don't have enough real estate. We got to maintain the certain coverage ratios, et cetera. So, but we feel comfortable at 50 that we could fit the market demand.
Okay, that was all I had, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Just for staff, real quick, under your proposal, you denied or you're recommending some defined aspect in relation to what can or cannot be parked there. Can you give us a little bit more of what's, what your reasoning was for that?
Well, as I mentioned before, there's, there was concern about vehicle or trucks are being stored in that area or that area being abused by other, by others or maybe by the businesses there. I think that Mr. Blunk has explained himself and provided sufficient information to justify removing that. But that's up to you. I just wanted to make sure again that you had the opportunity to discuss this and submit your recommendation accordingly.
Perfect. Thank you. Sir, a couple of questions right out the bat, you know, listening to everything going on here. Transient crime on I-25 is at its all time high. We're bringing in 50 more trailer trucks that are going to be stored there on a facility on site Tarazo. Each tractor trailer that comes in here carrying anywhere from 120 to 150 gallons of fuel for the transport of those individual items. My concern right off the bat is the transient crime. Right now, our police force, they're doing a great job and they're holding the line. Everything on the Colorado State Patrol, we pretty much have a station that's right out there on Baptist going south and north just because of the impact of traffic across the board on what we've already done here. That includes UPS, that includes Eagle Rock. All of those individual pieces, I guess, number one, with that transient crime, what type of security are you going to provide on this facility you specifically to ensure that the community of Monument is not impacted?
Yes, sir. With each particular building where we have a user or multiple users, depending on what their products are, a lot of those people will have their own security if they have things that we're protecting. I'm not aware of any, you know, uptick or whatever. I'm not saying that there's not there, but I'm not aware of any. We have construction going on. We've never had any theft issues with the construction that's been active out of the development. I was at Eagle Rock yesterday. They didn't indicate any theft issues or anything that. So I'm not aware of any issues. UPS has never told us that they've had any theft issues. I do not. No.
Okay, I live on Baptist. So we're starting to see an uptick of that.
Okay.
So as a resident of Monument, my concern is that even though you're not relaying that information, my question specifically to this compound, will you be providing security to supplement our Monument Police Force in order to respond to any incidents?
We don't. By separate security.
Would that be a consideration that you would be placing inside here in order to supplement our police force?
I don't think so. We. Actually, sure. All right.
How do you handle spills inside that individual area? Is there a mitigation associated with hazmat specifically for a hazmat incident that may or may not happen on this facility?
I'm not sure I understand the true question there.
Truck is bringing in hazardous material and they're placing it in storage. Are there restrictions associated to what can and cannot be stored on this facility?
There's no restrictions other than what a state, federal, local regulations require. Everybody will have to comply with what those requirements would be.
So we can implement those storage facilities in relation to what goes into that facility? Is that something that you would be entertaining to ensure the safety of this community?
Again, I'm not sure that we would be doing anything beyond what's required by, by local, federal or state regulations currently. Is that, am I answering that correctly?
There are specific standards, there are specific standards on the preliminary plan which requires compliance with the, and they've been carried forward onto the final PUD that require compliance with local, state, federal, federal standards regarding hazardous materials, emissions and so on and so forth. So all those are carried actually forward onto the PUD, even though they are standard requirements anyway that we have to comply with.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Last one for you. Right now, in an additional 50 vehicles that would be transferring onto this compound here, trucks that are coming in, 120 to 150 gallons of diesel fuel. Our current capacity of holding, I believe, at QuickTrip, at Pilot and at Valero, they're on the four corners of that area. To staff, my question is, have we done a study in relation to our total holdings of fuel inside those areas? And the impact of traffic associated with all of these vehicles that are being here or being, going through Fountain Valley or not, what is it? The two housing developments to the west on Baptist. And then everything coming down from Black Forest on Highway on Baptist going south. Right now, from 2017, when I moved back here to Colorado, it was a one access coming down 83 or coming down Baptist to get right on the highway. Now it takes, if I don't leave before five o'clock, it takes me 20 minutes to get from Jackson Creek Parkway onto I-25 and onto 25 going south, 20 minutes. This is an additional 50 vehicles that are going to be placed inside there that obviously has major impact for that junction. So my question is, I mean, we've already approved it. I got it when it comes to the PUD, that aspect. But again, the volume alone, the consideration, is there a possible consideration for something from the developer that would allow for, you know, future studies on what we're going to be doing to annexation of B or D down south? And how do we mitigate that? Is that a consideration? Because again, the volume with 50 going in there now, I mean, what's going to happen next? Just trying to curtail it in the backend because realistically, if we keep adding more and more, that 20 minute wait for me to go to work is going to be an hour.
We just contributed $480,000 to the improvement of what was supposed to be a traffic signal, which I fought years for. CDOT was intent on putting a roundabout. I'm glad we have some form of traffic control finally. It just was completed about two weeks ago. So we contributed almost a half a million dollars of that. Prior to that, we were required to put in a deceleration lane on Baptist Road with help with traffic flow. And we also had to make wood cover improvements. Those were a couple hundred thousand dollars each to the whole process. So we've, we've paid for our improvements for our effect along the way. And in our traffic studies, I've all taken that into account.
And I saw that. That's why I wanted to make sure that you conveyed that to the public because I agree with you. You guys have done more than you needed to do. I commend you on taking that 75 foot budget buffer of height down to 41. I commend you on that individual aspect of inside that facility, what you're doing. There's value there. There's no question. But I just want to make sure that we're looking at this from an economical aspect on how it's going to affect the community here.
Aside from writing all the checks is that we, we got a light instead of a roundabout. I'm not crazy about the roundabout there, but again, it's better than the stop sign traffic control we had before.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this point, are there any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, yes, Commissioner Egley had really a comment. If we, if one of us decides to provide a motion for approval, the only stipulation I would like to recommend, and I'll leave it up to the rest of the commissioners to agree, is that we have a stipulation that the building heights not exceed 41 feet.
Mr. Chair, there, we've got a comment and I know the public, the public portion of the meeting has been closed, but we do have a comment or a question online that I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to answer. It says regarding fire suppression. I don't think it's a, so if we can, can Ray, can you, can you share that? And then I can answer that because, and I would, I would, before Tom responds to the question, I would say that the fire district has been part of the process since day one, preliminary and final. So they're, they're, they've been completely involved with it and they'll continue being involved with the project to ensure safety and as far as fire suppression or fire, fire safety for the, for this site and the area. So, but with that, I want, if you could just share the comment, please.
Yeah. So to reiterate the comment here in the chat from Greg Thomas, fire suppression slash mitigation, internal and external, dedicated smoking areas, outdoors with defensible space slash buffers and idle limits on trucks overnight.
Covered the idle topic, I believe. The, I forget the slide that was, but there are, I can look that up or maybe Andrea can while I'm talking. The fire suppression for the buildings is an ESFR fire sprinkler system. That's state of the art. It stands for early suppression, fast response. And so for any industrial building, whether they're 50,000 square feet, 100, 100, up to a million square feet, that's the, that is the standard and that's what we have in these buildings. We have to make sure that we have the proper water flows from Forest Lakes Metro District. Our engineers have worked with them. We have plenty of water pressure, if you will, to support that ESFR fire system. So. Did you find that on that? External effects, sorry, that was the term I was trying to refer to is with regard to the question that was at hand. So that was the slide called Phase Two Preliminary PUD Plan, External Effects. Thank you for.
Sure. At this time, I defer to the, please, Commissioner Green, sorry. No worries.
Just very quickly, in the preliminary PUD, were these buildings shown in the site plan exactly like they are now? And the elevations with the height and the colors and everything?
They, they were not shown exactly.
Like they are now, they were shown in a fairly similar fashion. But we didn't know what they were going to be at that stage. It was, you know, conceptual. But that's why we, we sort of set the rules of the game of, okay, how big could a building be? How tall could it be? So we had those parameters and we had to comply with those. Yes.
Thank you.
Don Cathy, okay. Just to kind of tack on to what the chair was talking about earlier with the, with the traffic. And I understand, I mean, I, so I go the other way. So I'm on Old Denver Road. So already we've seen that the travel, traffic circle is not adequate. So 40 foot trailer going through there is taking up both lanes. So it's a two lane roundabout if you haven't been through it yet. And the semis, it's not big enough to handle the semi traffic. That being said, moving forward, I think we're going to have some real issues at that, at that intersection. You know, especially adding more, more semis to the area. And then not to mention if we end up building residential back in the south, that's going to be a huge egress problem right there. So I just wanted to kind of just make that comment. So everyone's aware because it is going to be trouble moving forward. I think we're, we're already kind of inadequate at this point right now. And going forward, it's just going to get worse.
I, I think one of the gentlemen in the back had mentioned that the trailer size length was 53, not 40. So the, yeah, standard highway, which, yeah, perfect. I mean, but for the public to understand that makes, they got the big gist of what is really going on behind the scenes. So we just want to make sure that that is up on there. But yeah, completely agree with you. Comments, concerns, request for a motion from the commission to identify our approval or denial.
Yeah, Commissioner Egley had started to make a stipulation reference site. We'd like to have a little bit of buffer if there is going to be a stipulation like that. 41 feet is what we're currently designing to, but we'd like to have, I don't know, five feet or something of some sort of buffer just, just in case things change between now and when we do the actual design of the building, where you design all the construction documents, we may have a requirement come in and say, oh, I need a little bit more. But I think 46 feet would be sufficient. So anyway, to that point.
Yeah. And I just wanted to say that the PUD that we submitted actually has 46 feet as the maximum height.
Thank you.
At this point, do we have a recommendation from the commission?
Collins, I make a motion to recommend approval of applicant's request to approve the final plan unit development and final plat for Falcon Commerce Center filing for, based upon the findings of fact attached hereto as Exhibit Four in the staff report.
So it does.
Without, with no condition. So it does not include.
Donna Hatch seconds the motion.
Thank you. Chair Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
I'm going to vote no. And I, I would like to clarify it by saying that it's become so frustrating for me to go to a preliminary PUD and not being given the detail I promised it in final PUD. We get to final PUD and everything apparently to the developer is already entitled. So I am voting no based on the fact that I do not see this meets any of the seven criteria of the characteristics listed in the comprehensive plan. I just don't think this comes close to meeting what the zoning ordinance nor the comprehensive plan had in mind.
Thank you. Commissioner Egley.
I vote no for the same reason as Commissioner Green. I don't believe that this meets the criteria of a comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Also voting no for the points that Commissioner Green raised. I do want to express gratitude for, for all the extra work that has been done.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes for in favor, three opposed.
Thank you, Ray. Our third case, a request, request for a sketch plan review approval for Woodmore Placer Replat B, a proposed six lot plan commercial development. This case has been noticed for public hearing. With that, I defer back to staff for presentation.
Getting the hang of this. This is good. So Chair and Commissioners, this is a request for sketch plan review for Woodmore Placer Replat B. Is it public hearing per the development code requirements for public notice? I want, before we go to, go into the specific request or the specific plans, I thought I'd review with you what a sketch plan review is and what we're looking at. So the purpose of a sketch plan review is to provide you, the planning commission, the opportunity to determine if, if the sketch plan or conceptual plan is consistent with the review and approval criteria listed in Section 18.02.240C. The planning commission shall approve, approve the sketch plan with or without conditions and review and approval criteria as follows. The sketch plan conforms with the town's comprehensive plan. The sketch plan proposes a harmonious development in a lot pattern that is compatible with the neighborhood and community. The lot and development pattern ensures there will be adequate light, air, parks, open space and open spaces for public uses or use. The sketch plan design provides for adequate access to all lots and tracks proposed in the subdivision. And last, the adequate, safe and efficient public improvements, utilities, community facilities and public places are available or will be provided with sufficient capacity to serve the subdivision. This is a, this project is a, considered a large subdivision, which gives me the, the authority to, to require a sketch plan. And our ordinance requires that, that, that sketch plan review be, have public notice, be conducted as a public hearing. But with that said, this is really your first opportunity to look at something early on. I think as Commissioner Green was kind of alluding to, this gives you the opportunity to have that dialogue with the developer and property owners. As they're, as they're proceeding through their design and making an investment on the property. I really want to thank Brett back there for stepping up and being part of this. This is, he's taking a risk and I want to make that clear to you that he's taking a risk by coming to you and having this conversation with you. So I'm hoping that this is a conversation and that we all walk away with a better feeling about what this can be and where it's going. I do not have a recommendation at the end of this because this is really about your dialogue with the, with the applicant. So the introduction to this case is the applicant CSI development is seeking your approval of a sketch plan for Woodmore Placer Replat B. The proposed sketch plan represents a conceptual outline for the, for the forthcoming preliminary and final plat, a proposed subdivision existing of an existing 11.65 acre property from one lot to six commercial lots. from one lot to six commercial lots with one tract to be dedicated to the Town of Monument. This property specifically is the property located directly north of the YMCA. Public notice was provided. The zoning for the property is a planned commercial development and it is designated as business campus in the the comprehensive plan. This is the sketch plan. As you see, as I was noting before, it's light, it doesn't have a lot of information. It does provide information about access, it shows conceptual easements, it shows a lot pattern and it provides access, shows potential access to Jackson Creek Parkway. The applicant has also provided a conceptual site plan. And I make that really clear that that's conceptual. The buildings might not be in the places that they are shown on here. At the end of the day, they might have a different configuration. But what they are showing here is the idea of that showing the tract of land at the southwest corner. They're showing building pads with various sized buildings and circulation with parking that's connected and connected between the lots as well as a shared access point down or spine down the center of the property going east to west from Jackson Creek Parkway. And this is where I pause and give Brett the floor and hopefully we'll have some good dialogue and and give him the ability to feel comfortable up to make additional investment to proceed.
I need to press the button. All good. Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Brett Benquet with CSI Development. Thanks, Dan, you got that up there. Yeah, so our intent is to subdivide the existing 11.65 acres, currently plotted as one lot into six lots and then one tract, which will serve as a shared full spectrum detention pond for all of the lots. There will be an east-west private drive within a 40-foot public ingress and egress easement, providing vehicular and pedestrian access to the site from Jackson Creek Parkway, as well as a 25-foot north-south public ingress and egress side of lots five and six. There will be a boundary easement as well as internal easements for utilities. And then the subject property is currently zoned, as Dan said, planned commercial development in the Town of Monument Regency Park. And we are not asking for a rezoning and all future uses must conform to the existing zoning pursuant to the Land Development Code. Next slide, please. So pursuant to the Land Development Code, all items were submitted for the sketch plan checklist. Next slide, Dan. And then including a narrative for justification that the sketch plan meets each item in the review and approval criteria per town section code 18.02.240(c). And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have and thank you very much.
So I guess the only I would add to that is we're recommending approval based on the criteria that we've been provided for, it's provided for in this in the Land Development Code of the applicant's sketch plan for for Woodmore Placer Replat B. What we also, what we've also given you is a draft resolution, which is a new thing, I believe, for the Plan Commission. You are final in this in this discussion. It does, this does not go up to council. You review the sketch and as I said, based on that conversation, you approved the sketch plan. And what I've done is I've given you the draft resolution. There are conditions that I've outlined and offered in that resolution. I have spoken to Brett about those conditions and you guys can talk a little bit more about that if you'd like. First, I'm trying to remember them offhand. One is orientation of buildings along Jackson Creek Parkway. And that is based on some of the other conversations we've had over on Cinematic View. So I wanted to make sure that was in there. I talked again, there's a condition about four-sided architecture. There shouldn't be a back of a building. And the third one is a unified sign program. Again, I want to, I want to reinforce this is a dialogue and this is coming to terms in agreement. This isn't something where we're going to tell him, you go, here's your marching orders and send you on your way. I really think this is something where you're kind of, you're having a dialogue and a conversation with him. So that way, when he does come back with a preliminary plat that he's, you've had enough information provided to you upfront, not be surprised. And he's had, he's had enough information to that he can confidently spend it, confidently make that investment in this in this property to come forward.
Thank you, sir. Next item here, as we went through just that conversation, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public hearing to see if there's anybody online. Ray, if you would, please, sir.
At this time, I'm not seeing anyone in the meeting who would like to raise their hand or speak.
You see, the applicant is here. Thank you, Brett, for coming back. Definitely, we, I'm sure, are going to have many questions for you. But at this point, as we close the public hearing, we're going to open it up for Commissioner questions and comments. And I defer to Commissioner Green.
What does this property sound?
So that.
I'm sorry, I missed it, I.
No, that's a, that's a great question. So this property is in the Regency Park Overlay District and it's a zone planned commercial development.
Yes, on this sketch plan, what have we entitled the developer to?
So you'll be approving the sketch plan for two years. And then the developer will have to always go back to that sketch plan to show consistency with the sketch plan. But the benefit to the developer is that when the developer has an approved sketch plan, you can't suddenly reject something that was already approved. So. You make a condition of approval that is only six lots would be a simple one. Or you could say five to eight lots plus a tract. So what you approve will depend on the level of detail you give because it is a conceptual plan. You know, this shows, do we have the site plan out?
Conceptually saying this looks good, this subdivision of five lots. We are not approving the detail of these building sites and parking lots. This is just an example of what it could be. But but there is no entitlement connected to this page.
That page is purely conceptual, so you can, you can see what they're thinking for the site and how those buildings and parking spaces might fit on the property and where stormwater might fit. Keep in mind, there have been no studies specifically to this the site that shows how much stormwater might be necessary or how are the other things that we typically require when we get further down the line? Yes, sir. This is usually where he steps in and says, but Dan.
Yeah, if I could speak to that because we did actually originally submit for a preliminary and final plat. So we have done traffic studies, drainage reports and everything that is required of a preliminary and final plat. And then we were told that a sketch plan is required. So we have done all these various things.
And if this tonight, the applicant comes back with something that looks like this with all the drive-throughs facing Jackson Creek Parkway, can you come back and say that you voted for it in the sketch plan?
Well, they still would need to, they still would need to provide the information to justify and show support that the each of those site plans comply with the with the code and the intent of the sketch, in the intent of the discussion of the sketch plan. Turned off, didn't want me to talk anymore. The, in this case, this is a, this property is zoned for these uses, right? So really, the only time you're going to see the next level is through the preliminary and final plat process. You might not see a site plan, but you're going to understand the concepts that would would come forward when they go through the administrative site plan approval at a later date. So. Yeah, so the, and I, the staff would be responsible for making, for ensuring that the site plan itself meets the intent or the discussion that occurred tonight.
We had this discussion at the last meeting and the discussion was there's something very wrong when you have a planned development zone, but you do it through preliminary and final plat and only the staff looks at the site plan, which is just strange, beyond strange. But could, can we put conditions on this sketch plan? And I'm not saying I'm ready to do this, I don't know if I have enough detail. But could, for instance, I say I vote to approve this with the condition that the buildings in front be oriented towards Jackson Creek Parkway? That's a site design issue. But it is a, you know, kind of a PUD type zone? Or does our jurisdiction begin and end with subdivided lots and entrances?
So that's, that condition is, that's what is in the draft resolution, that concept. But that, but the purpose of today, tonight is for you to have that conversation with the applicant. So you can hear what his thoughts are, might be on that, so you can come to agreement on that. As I said, I brought that, those three conditions to the applicant's attention. They're familiar with it and Brett's open to discussing those with you tonight. But we have to be, we do need to. Doug here, next to me, is going to punch me. But I think we, the point again, I'm going to say again, is this is about dialogue with the applicant so that when they move forward, Brett's absolutely right, he went way further already because he was ready to come in for his plat. And he's coming through here to help start the product, start the dialogue before he makes that submittal. So you're not feeling like you're the end, just the end game or the stamp, you're a part of the process. So again, I appreciate him coming in. Maybe that's, those questions that you're asking are something you could be asking of Brett and see where his position might be. And then albeit that. There being an administrative approval for site plan through staff.
I promise I'm not going to take up much more time. But to the applicant, I, you know, Jackson Creek Parkway is, it's a beautiful parkway. And I think from an urban design standpoint, we need to start facing that parkway if at grade level of the parkway. And I'm not sure what you're doing here. If like Monument Marketplace, you want to put an entry in and have it, you know, internally facing each other, that's a little bit different. But my problem has been with all these drive-throughs that have their blank wall in their drive-through right up against the parkway.
I think I would just say that, yes, there are several examples up and down Jackson Creek Parkway that we can kind of point to. And I don't disagree, Jackson Creek Parkway is a beautiful parkway and it'll be more beautiful once it's enhanced all the way up to 105. But in addition to Monument Marketplace and the Staples and Wells Fargo and Freddie's and every building within there that faces to the west, you also have across the street, the like former Davida Medical Building that faces to the south. You have Qdoba, Les Schwab and that do not face the parkway either. Faces to the east and Qdoba faces to the east and Les Schwab faces to the south. And Whataburger faces to the west. It faces against, you know, and so there are a lot of examples. And as a landowner, you know, I might not be the one that develops that that property. There's a user that's going to come in here and that user is going to want to be the one that dictates how their building fits on the site. So I don't think that that's my call or potentially the Planning Commission's call of how that, how that fits. If I could also, on the, on the zoning, so we have hard zoning and I know it's a little bit more of a rarity. We've done PUDs as well, Village of Jackson Creek is a PUD. And so we have an approved preliminary PUD, so you'll see every final PUD going forward for that development. But there are other properties such as Jackson Creek North Villains three through six that had hard zoning, they were zoned PRD four, PRD six. They went preliminary final plat or maybe they actually just went final plat and a site plan was approved administratively. We have other projects that are in process right now. Zeal is under the same process. And we have other sites, the one south of the YMCA has existing planned commercial development zoning. I think it's just a rarity because Falcon Commerce Center connects us, you know, Monument Junction. Everyone else has chose to go more of a planned unit development so they can set their own standards, probably because they couldn't meet the standards of the existing zoning. We are trying to comply with the existing zoning that we've had since 1997.
Thanks, Brett, I have a question for you. My concern is with traffic. And it seems like we're going to have a similar situation here that we have already existing to the south of there at the King Supers Shopping Center where we have not a full functioning intersection, but we have the outflow coming from the King Super Shopping Center 300 feet from Jackson Creek Parkway. And then we've got Lion's Tail, another few hundred feet up from there. And I see this just kind of being the same situation. So my, my personal preference would be to have no access off of Jackson Creek Parkway into this particular build out and to have the access come from the west side in and come up that spine and spread out from there and have the access further to the north on Jackson Creek Parkway.
Yeah, that, that won't work. I'm sorry, the I-25 is on, is actually on the west side of this property. So maybe, maybe I'm not understanding how you want to provide connections.
I think you mentioned that, or you, somebody mentioned that there's, there's, there's going to be a western, there's going to be a western portion where it comes and it connects into the backside here and comes up.
Yeah, so that, my apologies for not describing that properly clearly enough. So I'm going to draw on here, this is Jackson Creek Parkway in red. Okay, and that east-west spine I described is just this easement area here that comes. So they'll all have a single entrance off of Jackson Creek Parkway. And then all six of these properties will have joint access to that spine. But it does stop at the west property line because that's the highway. So it can't go any further than that.
Yeah, so my, my concern is that we're going to have the same, we're going to duplicate what we have two miles south of there at the King Super Shopping Center in terms of traffic disaster, to be honest with you. And so if there's some way that we can move that east-west spine further north and do that and bring the traffic in from there rather than so close to Higbee Road or even that stoplight in front of the YMCA.
Thought you were doing that. So what I'm hearing right now is that, so you have concern about the the access point from Jackson Creek Parkway. And I think what, what. And I think what, what this dialogue is helpful for is now Brett will know that when he comes back with his traffic study, that we make sure that we identify how there, this property doesn't have a negative impact or do what you're, what you're, you're envisioning might result. So this is very helpful. It's a very helpful conversation to have right now. And he would be prepared now to come back and, and show how this is not going to have a negative impact. Keep in mind, this property can be developed. I mean, it's going to be developed per the code. So it's going to generate traffic. But with your, you expressing your concerns tonight, he's able to now go back and make sure that he can address that when he comes back before you with a, with his preliminary and final plat. So thank you.
You understand what I'm, I'm saying Brett? Yeah. I just didn't want to, I don't want to have the same situation developed that we already have down further south.
I think I would, and I'm not exactly sure where, how far north that you're pointing to potentially have our, our access. But you know, it's a, it's a commercial development that would need I forget the the name of that development or the single family product always evades me.
The one that's just to the north.
There is a, you know, maybe a concert because again, it's, it's tied in with Elite Properties of America. Going south off of that junction, there's no intersection. It's a four-point intersection. But I think what Ray is alluding to is that individual in, in conversation, is that something that you would be willing to utilize that as the access point into that facility? I, I believe that's what Ray is saying, but just to keep that way at a minimum for, you know, future more and more and more stoplights that are there. How can we best tie in the facility across the board? Just as a consideration, obviously you as a landowner, you have every right, but I think that would be something that would, the community needs more facilities, needs more services. I think you're spot on, but in order to do that, what is the trade-off that you can concede to, to say, hey, this is how we'd like to help it?
Well, I, I think that we would be happy to, to attempt to work with Classic Homes, but keep in mind that getting access from the north would go through 127 residential lots to drive through there to get access to this. So I don't think that you want that as your primary access. If that could be a secondary access potentially, you also have the YMCA to the south. They, we wouldn't have access going northbound without the main access point, which we are showing there halfway somewhat between the site.
Conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
Corey. Thank you. To stick with the traffic piece, it sounds like you already have a traffic report, traffic study. Is that correct? You know, having the D cell, southbound D cell, right-hand dedicated right in there will help from that perspective as well. Everything coming southbound into the development. So I think from a traffic perspective, that's going to alleviate some of that concern. Having two southbound lanes is also going to help. It's not a single southbound lane. So it seems like, you know, that we fairly well set up, you know, obviously going northbound out of the commercial is going to be the hardest turning movement, but some of those traffic lanes help for sure. Is there, do you foresee any right-in, right-out in conjunction with that? Or do you know at this point? It just depends on what comes in.
I mean, I, I think that for a commercial development, we always would, you know, appreciate more access points. I'm not sure that, you know, the spacing would allow for it, but if it would, yeah. But we have, as you, as you stated, we do have a, a proposed southbound deceleration lane into the development. Coming out of the development, there's a dedicated left and a dedicated right turn lane for stacking and so forth. So.
Assuming there's already been discussions on water connections. It looks like you're connecting to YMCA into the north.
Correct. Yeah. We've been working with Woodmore Water and Sanitation District. We've been in, in contact with Classic for connecting with that Monument Junction project to the north for sewer and water. And then yes, who does connect down to the south to the YMCA as well.
Yep. Another piece was the orientation discussion, which I would like to respectfully disagree on the how to orient it, only from the perspective of it can be very hard to place some of these buildings and you know, kind of agree, you know, if you're coming in, you don't want to drive into the backside of the building. It's not as welcoming, but also at the same time, you want it to look nice. So as the condition stated in here, having the four-way architect or four-side architecture, is that the way that we can proceed with the things in general of not necessarily the orientation of it fronting Jackson Creek, but at least if there's a driveway on that side. I think maybe similar to Ziggy's, they had a, almost a canopy over and have an architecture that is more presentable on Jackson Creek. Excuse me. Versus stating that has to be oriented in that direction. If I'm coming into this commercial development, I'm coming into the, you know, parking on the backside of it. And if you're in a tight site, you sometimes don't really have options as far as, you know, traffic allocation, how you're, how you're orienting the vehicles through the site. It has to be a very fluid movement before you start to just get a cluttered mess of people trying to come into a, a store and a driveway. So it can be very tricky to orient those things in a certain way and a manner to get the fluidity of vehicle and pedestrian traffic through there. So maybe that's something that it has stated in here, it's the more of the architecture that's facing versus the, uh, Jackson Creek versus the orientation. Maybe that's a something that's more workable than, you know, speculating or determining orientation of the building. That's a little bit harder to set, if that makes sense.
True.
I think that's all I had generally. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey.
I got one for you and I'll have one for staff. So like, what's your vision for who do you want in there? I mean, you're talking like professional office, medical restaurants, all of the above?
All, all of these.
I do think, you know, what Monument might be lacking on would be more professional office space, more daytime employment. You know, to support the various, you know, support the restaurants, you know, we need more the, you know, kind of drive the services that, that we have. There, there are quite a bit of, you know, restaurants up and down the parkway. So hoping to, yes, attract some office type use. We've been talking to a medical office user. We've also been talking to various recreational kind of type users for like indoor recreation, kind of sports and stuff. So hopefully that, that would be great.
And then how long you think you'd actually take to get a first building up?
Uh, we have a first user and hoping that that would be relatively quickly as soon as the plat's approved and they would proceed with a site plan approval.
And then my question, whoops, my question for staff would be, so he's presenting six lots here. Could we put a condition on here? Or if he comes back and wants to sell one lot of six acres and have two other lots, can we still limit it to six two-acre lots or something like that?
Yes, but you'd have to have that conversation right now and with him. If you're limiting it up to six, six lots subdivision in this is, is depicted in the concept. That's something you can offer now, but I would turn back to the applicant and ask him that question. He's, he's the one who's seeking your approval. So.
I guess so. Here's my, I guess my question. I'll rephrase it. So if you're presenting six lots, can, can he come back and change it to four or two or one? I mean, how locked in are we to those six?
Uh, so he will have a vested right to the, the sketch plan. But you will have the opportunity to determine if any future approvals are consistent with it. And if you decide that a future site plan or a future plat, I guess you don't get to review a site plan. So a future plat is not consistent with the sketch plan, then you would essentially have to start from scratch.
Commissioner Smith, Brett, I, I think this is the perfect project and a great spot. I really do. I think it's, I think it's needed. I do agree with Commissioner Egley with the traffic. So the proximity of the light, you know, the light by the Y and egress in and out of here, I think is going to be a little bit of a challenge. But hopefully we can work through that. But I do, I think it's a great idea. Just if we could get a Korean restaurant and no dentist office, I appreciate it. I think that'd be great. No, I do. I think this is a good spot for this project. With the housing to the north, you got the Y to the south. I think it's going to fit in there perfectly. Yeah, yeah. So thank you for that.
I'd like to ask about the walkways. I see that going through the YMCA and from the high school, there is some established walkways around the YMCA and it sort of ends at the corner of. Do you have any proposed or are you going to be continuing and attaching to that walkway? Cause I didn't see it on your concept. And, and then secondly to the staff, are we, we're just approving the sketch plan and the lots at this time, not the concept plan.
That's correct. Think you're, you're not even actually approving the lots, right? That would be approved at the preliminary and final plat stage. An answer to your question regarding the sidewalk, yes, there will be a sidewalk along the west side of Jackson Creek Parkway, along the entirety of the frontage. That will be completed if it's depending on which goes first, whether it's the, the widening or yeah, widening of Jackson Creek Parkway. And then we are contributing financially to that. Or if the development occurs first, then we would be building those section of, those sections of sidewalk. And then internally, there will be sidewalk connecting each lot to the adjacent lot.
If I could just read the next section of code for the preliminary plat, which is 1802 250 A2, which is, I'm, I think you're familiar with that process, but normally the sketch plat has been, or the sketch plan has been waived. So that code section reads that the preliminary plat is more detailed than the sketch plan and should incorporate the comments and guidance provided during the sketch plan process. So this kind of discussion is, those are the comments and guidance. It's gray because obviously everyone is trying to work out how to make the concept work. But the comments and guidance that you're making now are intended to be incorporated in the like the concept of the sketch plan. But we'd like the access point moved forward, moved north. We definitely want that easement taken off and the buildings lining Jackson Creek Parkway. That commentary and guidance is meant to inform both the developer and also staff when they get to site plan review. Staff can go back to the comments of a sketch plan phase and start to build a narrative of what is approvable and what is not approvable. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah. Go ahead, please ma'am.
I want to know if this might be a condition, we would want to add something, if, if it's going to be professional buildings, retail, you know, I don't think is a problem. If it's a professional building, could we ask that it not be, say taller than the Y? And if you do want to make something taller than the Y, could we request some type of view corridor study?
I believe the YMCA is 50 feet and the planned commercial development zoning height maximum is 50 feet. You can double check me on that, but I'm pretty sure.
That's tall.
Yeah. So Brett, Brett is, yeah. So first want to say thank you. I mean, for you coming here and just having given us the opportunity to have this discussion. First off, I mean, thank you. You mentioned to Greg about what you envision. You're very familiar with Monument. You talked about how the buildings are facing here just on this intersection. What is this going to look like? When I ask that, I guess, is it going to be like a Briar Gate Commerce Center where the, the, the outlets at Briar Gate? Is it going to look like something of a Northgate Commercial Center where it's going to be something of a big box store like a, I don't know, a, a Lowe's showing up over here when we got a Home Depot right next to us? Is it going to be a car salesmanship aspect? I mean, what are you, I guess, what are you truly catering to in the community? I, I hear you saying restaurants and medical buildings. We don't need medical buildings. We need something that is going to provide a service, especially with the high school being right across the street. That's my concern is that I think what you're building here is definitely a value. I, I agree with the six lots, the retainment on one. I think that's perfect. The 50 foot, 50 foot retainer, I think is perfect. I think the Jackson Creek Parkway aspect, that that's going to be something a little tricky to work out. But I think that overall how, what, you're the only one that's really coming in here to provide a service to Monument. So I thank you for that. And I think that, you know, in what we're doing, asking what is that vision of the services that you're going to provide the community? As we grow just to the north, we have those six apartment buildings that are coming in. We're still going to grow on Higbee going west or east. We have Forest Lakes. We have all these other, we know that we need a another grocery store. We know that we need restaurants. We know that we need, all of these are things that I would ask personally to say, hey, you know, would that be a consideration to support Monument as it grows out? Because those services are not here. Unfortunately, we're losing those dollars south of Glen Eagle over there toward that Interquest Parkway to the city of Colorado Springs with a PIF aspect of monies that are being generated in Monument that are going outside of our revenue stream. So again, I thank you for that. Height would be only the concern signage I would look at in relation to, you know, what is that thing look like in comparison to a football game over there at Lewis Palmer High School? And when that's dark, it's dark. Night skies have that considerational aspect. You're well, you're very well versed in the water. We thank you for, again, all of the times that you spent here. Signage height would be one of the big pieces, but provide the community something of value. Right now, what we've had here is all transient storage, all transient movement, all transient. We don't have people like you that are providing services for this community. And thank you for this project. Because I think if you didn't come back, you'd look at it from, well, you know, where, where else can I go? And the next big developer would come in here and make that into a multi-level housing that we, we don't need that. We need services like you're going to try and provide here. So again, I thank you. I just want to make sure that, you know, those individual stipulations don't exceed that. I'd rather see a service that will provide something to the community, not necessarily a medical building. That's obviously you as the developer or you as the owner, you have that prerogative. But I think the community would be behind you a hundred percent. If this were a Briar Gate piece where PF Chang's is now and you have Ted's Steakhouse and you have those developers that are in there and you have a shopping area, you have somewhere where those high school kids can go. Right now, I, I know they're going to Topgolf and our monies are going there instead of here inside Monument. So again, that's my, my two cents. I think my speaker was off. So sorry about that.
No, we recorded, we recorded everything. We're good.
Right. So at this point, if we have any other commit, or any other questions, concerns, comments for the commission, I just need a motion to vote specifically on approval or approval with conditions, denial or continuance.
Before we do that, can I ask a quick question? I just, you mentioned that the staff will come back and review our comments and everything that was brought up during this. We'll make that as a condition of approval of this tonight. I, I guess that's my question. I mean, traffic, everything else that we, we talked about, fronting the Jackson Creek Parkway with buildings. I guess I'm just wondering. Uh, I guess I'm just wondering, are you referring to just minutes of the meeting that they're going to look at? Or are we making that a condition of approval?
That depends how you would like to do it. Uh, if it were very firm things that you wanted to put in to, they were allowable conditions, uh, you could do that. But all of the discussion will provide guidance for staff and when the next stage is reached, if the developer is ignored. If a developer has ignored comments or guidance, that would give you a much stronger position for denying uh, preliminary plat.
So I guess my next question is, Brett, do you plan on putting a vehicle car lot inside this development?
No, uh, no, we did not. No, um, no. I, and Dan made a couple, maybe just suggestions or ideas that he threw out to you. Foresighted architecture, we have no problem providing. I think the town code speaks to that, or I would just say that, yes, we plan on doing that. A uniform uh, sign um, plan. Um, I don't, I don't foresee that being an, an issue as well. If, if that's something that is of importance to you. Um, the building orientation, I would be hesitant to, to um, agree to, to that one, just because I, I think, again, that's just a user driven and. Yeah, if, if you have any others that you'd like to, you know, propose or.
What do you envision going in there? I mean, right now, you know that, you know, the corridor from Castle Rock all the way down to South Colorado Springs.
Sure.
That development at how many acres is that total?
This one?
This, yeah. Eleven and a half acres. You have the potential to make it just like PF Chang's and Ted's over there at Briar Gate.
I would think that one's quite a bit larger and that is more our vision of the Village of Jackson Creek. Um, that's a 47 acre lot, um, or 47 acre site. And it has, you know, just um, certain streetscapes and walkability and features that we want it to be walkable, connected. Not to say that this one isn't, but I'm just not envisioning that this will have. It can't be a high traffic generation as you, you've pointed out. I don't think we can get a grocery store at this, at this site. You know, they would want a signalized intersection and things like that. But we do want to provide commercial development with services, employment and those various things and, and restaurants and things for people to go to. Trying to think of uh, development, maybe as you're on Interquest on the south side, there's a lot of, you know, restaurants and connected with some offices kind of behind it and things like that. That's probably the best example I can think of.
That's, yeah, thank you.
I guess my last question is, when, when we get, when we get to the next stage, when Brett comes back with the final plat, uh, we're not going to be able to set any conditions on that. Is that correct?
Well, the, the plat's going to need to comply with the code. Um, and it's going to need to provide the same findings and qualifications that you review for all uh, preliminary and final plats. So you'll still have the option to do that. Um, the, the I, we've, in, we've had this discussion before. Um, you, you can't start making conditions that change the zoning. I mean, he hasn't under, he's in, he's got a vested right uh, under the zoning. Um, you, we, um, we, we don't want to put ourselves in the position of saying you can't do something that he's already gotten permission to do um, in there without valid justification. Um, so, uh, and so yes, you can provide conditions in that discussion or at least have the conversation and work with the, the applicant. Uh, but you want to stick with the realm of what the code allows you. Um, and if he's not asking for a plan, you know, development or a conditional use, that doesn't really open the door for you to start bringing in um, unrelated, unrelated or unjustified conditions. Um, now, as we're going to into the comprehensive plan, you know, I live talking about it. That's going to really allow us to, to solidify and understand our, um, what we're looking for and envisioning for this corridor and other places. Uh, Brett and his peers will be stakeholders and part of that conversation with you. Uh, so I would invite them to be part there so that we can all talk about what works for uh, what the community's vision is and also what works for the marketplace. Um, it, I, I, I love a, a great Chinese restaurant, but the market might not support it. Um, so I want to make sure that we're, we're thinking about the things that we can collaborate with uh, the, the private sector and, and really make sure their investment works towards our goals.
All right. At this time, I ask the commissioners if we have a motion to vote at this time.
Commissioner Smith, I'll make a motion to approve by resolution number 012024. The applicant's sketch plan for Woodmore Placer Replat B, based upon the approval criteria listed in Monument Land Development, Development Code, Section 1802 240 C, submit as Exhibit A through C in the staff report.
All right, second.
Um, may I ask a question? Just so I'm, I'm clear. Are there, so there's, there's three conditions in there listed right now? Are you including those in your record? That, that you're okay with those offered conditions or are you removing them? I just want to make sure, because I, I slipped them in the text. I just want to make sure you're making a decision to keep them or, or all of them or some of them or none of them at all.
I think it's written was, was fine.
Okay.
Buildings should be you know, on the far east side of the property. I think that should maybe be more dictated by the user.
I would agree. I would agree.
That's why I was making sure. Motion, um, the concept plan actually shows all the buildings oriented or close to Jackson Creek Parkway. They're not up against Jackson Creek Parkway, but they're on that side of the property or in that corner. I want to make sure that with whatever motion you're making, is he including it? Or if you need to better describe that condition so that he's got clear guidance on what you're expecting? Or, um, or me better, better yet, because I'm the one who's going to have to review the site plan later um, to make sure that it meets uh, the, the discussion tonight, so.
My intent was to agree with Commissioner Peterson to not dictate the direction of the buildings, to let, to let the landowner make that decision. So you might.
And that, um, you might be omitting that condition or, or modifying that condition. I just want to make sure, because I, this is, this is important for later.
Are we able to remove condition number two and stick with the foresighted architecture? So I have condition number one and condition number three, would that be acceptable?
That'd be A of B?
So under section B, there is one, conditions one, two, and three. Correct me if I'm wrong. Those are three conditions that under section two.
He, he's saying it correctly. It's a, it's in the resolution, so. Yeah, you're, you're fine. You're fine. I got, I, yeah. Um, yeah, good, thank you.
I don't know why the camera decided to focus on that.
Camera's crazy. So can I just amend my motion to remove uh, condition two? Just condition two. Just for clarification, that, that removes the condition, uh, that buildings, buildings and lots, one, five, and six should be placed adjacent to Jackson Creek Parkway.
I, I accept, yeah, accept the change in second.
Thank you. I will now continue the vote. So Chair Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Green. Commissioner Egley.
No.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes, sir. I apologize for.
So is Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
And Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes six in favor, one opposed.
Perfect. Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Brett. Truly appreciate your time. Next item, we have non-agenda public items at this time, if there are any, and I defer to staff.
Uh, I only wish that you all have a glorious, healthy, happy holiday. Uh, we have a busy year coming up. Uh, Jan, the first meeting in January will be quite busy. I'm guessing you're going to see Brett again. Whether you like it or not, he'll be back. And, uh, but we also, um, but we'll be uh, setting schedule, uh, um, kind of setting um, uh, roles uh, at the first meeting in January. We'll also be, I'll be, be able to provide you an update on the comprehensive plan contract and which uh, uh, which contractor or a group of, actually a team of, team of consultants we're going to be going with. Um, I can tell you that we received eight uh, proposals for the comprehensive plan and I would say that they were all awesome. So we have a hard decision uh, to amongst us to, to pick a good consultant team to work with you. Um, that you don't get that very often, so I'm, I'm really excited about it. Um, and then we're also going to be talking about um, impact fees uh, and still doing an analysis of that. And I'm sure you'll be involved with that as well. So um, rest up. Uh, you, you've got your work cut out for you next year.
Thank you, sir. Any other non-agenda items from the mission? Moving on. Yeah, please.
Just one comment. Um, really appreciated the packet. Great job. Um, appreciated the, the updated traffic and, and drainage reports. I thought that was super helpful and beneficial. I appreciate it. And thank you for that one applicant that's here for, for uh, helping out with that stuff too. Appreciate it.
We're going to go move to is reports, communications and announcements. Uh, anything staff, nothing commissioners? Uh, one thing of note, obviously, when we have the January 8th, uh, we will be identifying chair, co-chair associated with the commission for 2025. Uh, anybody coming off for next year? Just one, yep. And other than that, obviously, I think we're going to be good uh, going in for the next year. So we'll have to make our recommendations for chair.
If you know it.
Uh, next one. At this time, I would like to uh, request a, can we have a motion to adjourn? Anybody then, other than myself? And a second to adjourn?
A second.
Second, is it? For the planning commission, may you have a wonderful Christmas.